Yeah, and it's good till September, so we're not.
We got five thirty guys. It's supposed to be in order. It's gonna be just in the fudge. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of all. Are these on guys?
Thank you.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Charles Wiltsey, your friend Simmons here, Craig Scott.
Yes.
Item two, approve of the agenda. We are going to remove six C resolution to authorize purchase of correctional facility body scanner.
Okay.
Uh, per our county administrators recommendations, our legal counsel, we're looking into if we can actually spend opiate money on that correctional facility body scanner. So that will be on the committee of the whole at the next meeting. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Can someone entertain a motion to?
I'll make a motion that we accept the agenda support.
We have a motion commissioner Wiltsey with support from Commissioner Scott to approve the agenda with the stated changes. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Approved. All opposed say no. Motion carries. Item three A review of minutes. We have the June eighth twenty twenty three regular meeting minutes.
I've reviewed the minutes. I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
The motion from Commissioner Scott.
I'll second.
Uh, support from Commissioner Wiltsey. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Item three B, June fifteenth twenty twenty three, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
I've read the minutes. I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
We have a motion Commissioner Scott.
I will second.
Support from Commissioner Mayhew. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Item four, public comment and agenda items only. Is there any public comment in the room? On agenda items only. Any public comment on the phone? Item five correspondence, we received correspondence from Assala Valley Committee of Mental Health related to their May twenty second twenty twenty three meeting minutes. And from Ottawa County related to Constitutional County Declaration and Resolution of Honor Armed Forces Personnel. Those have been received and filed. Item six consent agenda. Um, I don't see a reason why we can't combine these. All with the, with the exception of C. Do you guys have any issues with this? Was combining these?
I, I think.
Individually.
So.
Item six A, resolution to approve childcare fund budget adjustments. This resolution is sponsored by pro weight court Judge Scott Williams in front of the court, Michael LaFave. On September twenty second twenty twenty two, the Board of Commissioners adopted resolution twenty two dash one two eight. To approve general appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty three. It is necessary to adjust the budget as a result of updated revenue and expenditure projections, fund transfers, reappropriations, accounting and contractual changes, errors and omissions, and additional appropriation needs. Approval of the resolution will implement budget adjustments in the childcare fund that will result in two thousand two hundred and eighteen dollar reduction in appropriations from the general fund.
Make a motion to accept the resolution.
We have a motion Commissioner Scott.
I'll second.
Support from Commissioner Wiltsey. Any further discussion?
I think. Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Uh, the judge. Who then did a very good job explaining budget adjustments needed. Good to reason to pass them.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Charles Wiltsey.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Item six B, resolution to approve front of the court fund budget adjustments. This resolution is sponsored by front of the court, Michael LaFave. On September twenty second twenty twenty two, the Board of Commissioners adopted resolution twenty two dash one two eight to approve general appropriation appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty three. It is necessary to adjust the budget as a result of updated revenue and expenditure projections, fund transfers, reappropriations, accounting and contractual changes, errors and omissions, and additional appropriation needs. It is the practice of Oklahoma County to compensate employees for a cured time off upon separation from employment for reasons such as retirement. The approved front of the court fund budget does not include funds sufficient to compensate a recently retired employee. Approval of the resolution will allow for transfer of four thousand three hundred and forty eight dollars from the general fund continues contingency line item to the front of the court fund to offset costs associated with payout of a cured time off.
I move that we approve the resolution as presented.
We have a motion Commissioner Scott.
I'll second.
Support from Commissioner Wiltsey. Any further discussion? Commissioner Scott.
This is the good example of not budgeting for accumulated time off. And now we have to make a budget adjustment for it. So we need to approve it.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Brenda Simmons. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsey.
Yes.
Item sixty, resolution to approve Michigan Housing Opportunities Promoting Energy Efficiency Grant Agreement. This resolution is sponsored by Housing Consulting Services Director Leanne Fisher. On July fourteenth twenty twenty two, the Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty two dash nine one to apply for two hundred and sixty two thousand five hundred dollars from the Michigan Housing Opportunities Promoting Energy Efficiency Grant Program. The Michigan Hope Grant Program is designed to encourage and facilitate energy efficiency focused residential housing repairs and upgrades. This Michigan State Housing Development Authority approved the Oklahoma County grant request subject to approval of a grant agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve Michigan Housing Opportunities in an energy efficient grant agreement.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wiltsey.
Partner.
Support from Commissioner Scott. Any further discussion?
Um, I think this is just another example of, well, she's doing her job there, getting these, getting these grants.
Any other further discussion? Roll call vote.
Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Charles Wiltsey.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons. Yes. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item sixty, resolution to approve amendments to the Clean Air Policy. This resolution is sponsored by the County Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahoney. On May twelfth twenty twenty two, the Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty two dash six six to adopt a clean air policy to prohibit smoking and vaping in county occupied work areas and public spaces, including conference rooms, reception areas, hallways, workstations, private offices, vehicles, and the correctional facility. Approval of this resolution will add an enforcement section to address policy violations.
Make a motion that we amend the Oklahoma County Clean Air Policy.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wiltsey with support from Commissioner Simmons. Any either further, any further discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
I'd really like to see this a little stronger, fifty feet. This is far enough. I wouldn't mind even seeing it not on campus. As the hospitals do.
Any further discussion?
We'll do a roll call vote on that. Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsey.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons. Yes. Craig Scott.
No.
Item six F, resolution to authorize sale of surplus property. This resolution is sponsored by the Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahoney. On October twenty second twenty twenty, the Oklahoma County Board of Commissioners adopted resolution twenty dash five one to adopt a disposal of surplus property policy, except for sales to other units of government or to nonprofit corporations. The county strives to maximize net proceeds from the sale of surplus property. The Public Group Auction Service was designed specifically to enable public agencies to manage their entire surplus inventory through online auctions while at the same time maintain compliance with the state regulations and policies. Administrative costs for auction services are assessed to the buyer of surplus property as part of the sale. The proposed resolution authorizes useful services provided by the Public Group of Disposal of listed surplus county property.
I'll make a motion to authorize the sale of surplus property.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott.
Second.
Support from Commissioner Simmons. Any further discussion? This is a property that was listed, the, the cameras.
This is mostly phones.
Oh, that's what it was. Oh, yeah. Picture of them. Okay, the old, older phones. Was there anything else on there?
I don't think so. It was all phone related. And so it's enough similar type phones that Tom believes that they will be attractive to somebody who needs a phone system.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsey.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item sixty G, resolution to establish and appoint members to the Opiate Settlement Advisory Committee. This resolution is sponsored by the Committee of the Whole. On November twenty third twenty twenty one, the Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty one dash one five five to authorize entry into an interest state agreement concerning allocations of settlement proceeds and the national opiate litigation. Oklahoma County is scheduled to receive an opiate settlement of approximately one point nine million dollars or approximately a hundred and seven thousand dollars each year over eighteen years to be used for opiate abatement purposes. The Board of Commissioners finds it appropriate to create an Oklahoma County Special Opiate Settlement Advisory Committee, consistent with rules established in section eight dot four on the Board of Commissioners Rules of Procedure to help ensure the expenditure of the opiate settlement funds comply, complies with the required guidelines and criteria. Approval of the resolution will establish membership on the Special Opiate Settlement Advisory Committee consisting of the following persons. Brian Gilbert, Blair Smalley, Brett Giltner, Michael Bowers, Kathy Dolard, Sharon Saint Germain, Shannon Davidson, Gail Huey, Jenny David, Charles Wiltsey, Tara Rose, and Ladonna Schultz.
I'll make a motion to, uh, best, best emotion.
I'll support.
Or a resolution.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott and support from Commissioner Simmons. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Item six H, resolution to authorize purchase of a water softener. This resolution is sponsored by the Parks and Recreation Commission. The Parks and Recreation Commission solicited quotes for purchase and installation of a water softener adequate to meet the needs of the West Branch Secret Campground RV Park. Approval of the resolution will waive sealed bid requirements of the purchasing procedures policy and accept the quote from Culligan Water Condition of West Branch for purpose for purchase and installation of a new CTM two ten with nine hundred pound salt tank at a cost not to exceed seven thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars.
I'll make a motion to accept the quote for purchase.
We have a motion Commissioner Wiltsey. I'll support that. Commissioner Scott, did you want to add anything to this?
We, we did competitive bidding. Um, and, uh, that was, uh, that's our recommendation for the Parks and Rec.
I'm coming.
Commissioner Simmons.
I thought there was already, um, an agreement made with Parks and Rec about the, the bids and who would get the contract, no? In our last meeting.
This is the recommendation we were coming to. We have to come to the, we have to come to, the final decision has to be made by the commissioners.
I understand that, but.
Culligan Water Condition of West Branch for seven thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars is the, is what you guys accepted, the Parks and Rec.
Say that one more time.
Oh, like according to this, the quote from Culligan Water Condition of West Branch is who you guys chose out of the bids for a price of seven thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars, not to exceed.
No, no, no.
No, no.
No, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It is a correction. No, it's from Simmons, Simmons, uh, well drilling was the bid that we recommended.
Yeah, I have attached that bid to. Your policy states you take the low bid, but there may be reasons why the Culligan one didn't work for you. I could quickly even like now rewrite this resolution to accept the other bid.
Do you have that number? It's very close.
Eight thousand one hundred and forty.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's the correct, that is the correct recommendation.
Literally would take me just a couple of minutes. I just a couple of lines have changed and I can have your resolution. Updated one.
Okay.
Can I? Can't we just reword that to Simmons?
It's, it's Commissioner Wiltsey's motion, so he.
Yes, resend it.
He can amend it.
Oh.
Okay. I'll amend my motion.
Can he do that?
He can. And, uh, what you'd want to do is just instruct me to amend the resolution to state, uh, quote from Roy Simmons and Son Well Drilling and insert their figure of eight thousand one hundred and forty dollars. So you'll see there just two lines there, two paragraphs, I don't know what you want to call them, in the resolution that would change. The rest of it would still be accurate.
What, what was your guys' rationale for going with the eight thousand one hundred and four dollars?
What was it within the, or ten percent rule?
So you rescinded? Do we need somebody to support that?
Always ten percent rule. I mean, that's.
Yeah, you want to, I, I don't, I didn't listen tracking. You'd want to, uh, make a motion to amend the resolution to state, uh, Simmons' bad.
Okay. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to amend the resolution to the Roy some bit of eight thousand one hundred and forty dollars.
I wrote one hundred and four. Was it four or forty?
Eight thousand one forty.
I wrote it wrong. Sorry. Sorry, Commissioner Wiltsey. I'll support that. Any further discussion?
Oh, I have some discussion here. I cannot vote. Conflict of interest.
Yeah.
Okay.
She did not vote at the parks meeting at all.
Either.
Either.
Because.
Conflict of interest.
Any further discussion?
She's a product of Roy Simmons.
Don't spread that, don't spread that around.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsey.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Uh, item seven, new business. Seven A, resolution to reenact the Oklahoma County Off-Road Vehicle Ordinance. This resolution is sponsored by the Sheriff Brian Gilbert. On July fourteenth twenty twenty two, the Oklahoma County Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty two dash nine six to enact an ordinance authorizing the operations of ORVs. Section sixteen of the ordinance set and expiration date one year from the effective date unless the county board of commissioners takes formal action to reenact the ordinance. Approval of the resolution would reenact ORV ordinance and strike existing section sixteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott.
I'll second that.
Support from Commissioner Wiltsey. Do you guys have anything to add to this?
Well, we haven't had any negative feedback on the ORV or since it's been enacted. Um, really plan to put it forward this year this summer. We had a personal report that I, sunset, I think should be.
It, it was. It was, there's a time in this one. I printed it off just to refamiliarize myself with it again.
That was correct. The room size was correct.
The what? Room size? Any, any other discussion? Commissioner Simmons.
Yeah. Why are you eliminating the sunset language?
We, we put a time on there, an actual time.
And a time is what?
Because sunset or sunset was sun up and sundown. Yeah, there's actual five, isn't it five AM? I read it last night. Five, operate an ORV on roads only between the hours of five AM and eleven PM.
That means they can drive during the dark on the highways.
No, only between five AM and eleven PM.
Eleven PM is pretty dark outside.
These are, these are the times that we watch.
Oh. Chairman Chair.
Yes.
I don't understand.
Wait.
Go ahead.
The sunset clause.
The sun cuts out.
One year.
Yeah, we're talking about two different things here.
What? Come on up, sir.
We put in a, we put in a one year sunset on the, on the motion.
Yeah.
That we would relook at this a year later. And then we're at a year later. It's not dark yet outside, but.
Eleven PM it is.
Yeah, eleven. We're not going to stay till eleven tonight.
Okay, guys. So this is what we went with. There was a lot of discussion on this last, Commissioner Simmons, there was a lot of discussion on this last year. This is the timeframes that we went, we had a public hearing. We had a lot of input from the sheriff. Uh, yeah, we did. Couple, uh, our, uh, business owners.
So off-road vehicles can be ridden in hours of darkness is what we're saying. Is that correct?
Lighted.
Display white, white lighted headlight and red lighted taillight at all hours. There's no, did you, did you happen to look at that?
So these are off-road vehicles, so they're off-road.
And off-road trails.
Yeah. Oh, no. To operate on the roadway until eleven o'clock. They can operate on trails twenty-four hours a day. That's state law. I mean, that, that I don't think we can, I don't think we have the power to to do that. That would be a DNR action. This is just on the Oklahoma roadways. That's all our vehicle ordinance covers is operation on the roadways in Oklahoma County. We have no jurisdiction over the trails.
I understand that. But I I just.
We had a lot of conversation about that. We talked about ten PM if I remember, if I recall correctly. We talked about a couple of different times.
Nothing is really daylight until darkness.
Well, that looks very subjective.
How subjective is daylight dirt?
It is very subjective. So that's why we went with times. Much more specific. Any other discussion?
So does the motion lift the sunset clause for another year?
The proposal is just to drop it.
It's to drop it. Right. Okay. I'm good.
What do you mean by drop it? I guess I'm confused now.
Well, the sunset clause says you'll review this after one year of an.
Oh.
When it's up tomorrow.
We don't have.
That time is run out anyway.
So we won't have to renew this again next year is what you're saying.
Right.
Okay.
No motion.
Gotcha. Any further discussion? Better do a roll call vote on this.
Charles Wiltsey.
Uh, yes.
Brenda Simmons.
No.
That.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Item seven B, Oklahoma Township Sparks Grant Letter of Support. Commissioner Scott has asked for a letter of support for the Oklahoma Township Spark Grant Application to Develop Mineral Springs Park. A majority vote on a motion to approve the proposed letter is needed. Commissioner Scott, would you like to take the floor?
Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the, approve it.
Go ahead. Does anybody want to support it? I don't know anything about it.
Yeah, I'll support it.
Support from Commissioner Wiltsey. Commissioner Scott, can you explain?
Yes, uh, the Oklahoma Township where I live, it has a park up on Maze Road at the, uh, famous Oklahoma Springs. And we have for quite a few years now been trying to garner up some, some money so we could make that park a little bit nicer. Well, with the DNR Sparks Grant that's available to communities, the township is going to, uh, uh, apply for the grant. And, uh, it's the grant, it's already been written. It's, uh, matter of fact, due next Monday. And, uh, the township's asking for a million dollars to, uh, build a park there. And they're asking the county to, uh, for a letter of support for the grant. It costs, there's no cost to the county at all. This is the same thing that Rose City just asked us for a couple of weeks ago.
How, how confident are they that they're going to get the grant?
Uh, the limit's a million. They want to go to a million.
Good.
Big, I guess. Two, two dogs.
Absolutely. Any further discussion?
Yeah, there's a lot of properties there.
Oh, jeez. I think there's like, uh, three, three and a half acres, something like that. Though I, I looked it all over last night. I.
Are you guessing or do you?
Yeah, I'm guessing.
I'll cross that off.
There is part of the property that's there, some lots that were given to the township with the condition that they be used for a park.
Be used for a who, please?
A park.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Some two lots along Maze Road, uh, was, was stipulated to be used for a park. Of course, the, with, a few years ago, we put some rocks around the spring there. We had, uh, it took us two years to get designated from the, from the state as a historical site and have a historical marker there. Um, of course, it's been a, a county sightseeing marker. The Historical Society has a marker there for, um, for tours. So it gets visited quite a bit. We, uh, put an harbor up a few years ago and a park bench there. And, uh, uh, people come along, throw their spare change in it.
Who gets to keep the money?
Well, uh, the township.
Okay.
Township owns the property. Unless you want to jump in and it's pretty cold.
Any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Item seven C, interpretation of resolution twenty two dash one two seven. County Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahoney seeks official interpretation of resolution twenty two dash one two seven concerning per diem eligibility. The Board of Commissioners established standing and liaison committee appointments at the regular meeting held on January twelfth twenty twenty three. Resolution twenty two dash one two seven sets commissioner per diem rates of seventy five dollars full day and forty dollars partial day for officially called standing committee meetings. The resolution does not preclude a commissioner from receiving a per diem payment when he or she is appointed to a statutory board and or agency, adding that commissioners shall receive the same per diem as non-commissioner members of the statutes statutory boards slash agency. The fiscal year twenty twenty three budget for the Board of Commissioners includes an allocation for per diem payment. Other board and agencies such as planning commission and emergency dispatch authority also have budgeted allocation for per diem paid to the receptive members. However, per diem rate paid members may vary among those board and agencies. A recent request for per diem payment was this, was redirected to applicable statutory boards slash agencies for payment from those bodies. The requestor disagreed with the interpretation of the resolution twenty two dash one two seven. Per diem eligibility and rates for attendance at standing committee meetings is clear. However, in order to assure per diem are paid in a manner consistent with its intentions, the board is asked to consider the following question with respect to per diem payment for attendance at meetings of statutory boards and or agencies. Our per diem payments for attendance at meetings of statues statutory board and or agencies to be paid from fund balance, funds to be paid from funds allocated for statutory boards and or agencies per diems or from the county board of commissioners general fund line item. A majority vote on a motion to establish the board's interpretation is needed. Tim, do you, I guess there's not really.
Uh, it's just a question. Where do we pay it from? Um, there's no doubt, uh, the, uh, expense sheet that was submitted, they're all legitimate meetings, no question about that. But do the per diems come from your general fund allocation? Or do you think they need to come from the other board? So for instance, let's use the planning commission as an example. We also allocate per diems under the planning commission. So Ryan sends those off and they're paid, I think, monthly. We have a county commissioner sits on the planning commission. So when the county commissioner sits on that commission, does that payment come from the planning commission or from the board?
How is it always came in the past?
I frankly haven't had this come up. And since I've been here, um, my, um, past experience is that those other boards pay that per diem. So particularly when you've got like a nine one one board that's a separate authority, so they have a separate budget. They set their own rules. They say we pay our board members X. And then they take care of all the accounting on their end.
I don't.
For me, it's six and one half dozen each other. I just need to know which, which, uh, line to pull it from.
I don't think that that's necessarily true because actually I, I, I submitted this for the first time. So I sparked a lot of questions with all of this and I don't want to say problems, but, uh, um, the nine one one board that I sit on, the previous commissioner, um, I, I spoke to Jesse and I spoke to Ryan both this week. And, um, the previous commissioners that, that served on both those boards received reimbursement from the board of commissioners is what both of them stated. So that's how it has always been. Um, and now there's lots of questions about it. So that's how it's been being done.
Frankly, because I, I've not had to deal with it before. And my, my assumption is because we budgeted, particularly with planning commission budgeted it over there, that's where it would come from. But that doesn't mean a thing. If you want it to come all from the county board budget, it can. I just need that direction. I don't want to mess up the works here.
I guess my initial question was that's where it has been coming from. According to, to Ryan and to Jesse that I spoke with this week, that's where it has been coming from in the past. I just joined those commissions in January, those boards. Commissioner Simmons, did you have something?
Yeah, like the board, the board of health, board of health pays for that. The county does not pay for it because they're different entity. I would assume that. I would assume that if you're an authority, but I'm assuming, you know what that does to people. Um, if they're a different entity, I would think that, um, EMS and nine-one-one would, would pay because they are a different entity. And they require that, my understanding is that the commissioner be on there. Is that correct?
Don't know their charters, but probably, yeah.
So, but with those that are, um, put on like, um.
Planning, it's not their own en, entity?
Is not?
No.
Then probably should be from, from us.
Correct. I mean, they're not, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. But I think if they're an entity on their own, like an authority, and that authority should pay, just personal opinion. But I don't, and I, that's what I thought happened because I know the Board of Health pays. I don't submit anything to the Board of Health if it's here.
They pay you?
They pay, they pay mileage, they pay my per diem, they pay everything.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Commissioner Wiltie.
I'm on the EMS board and, yeah, we get paid from EMS. Check from EMS.
Yeah, I would assume that you would. I would say a different authority, and that authority should pay because they require to have commissioner on it, then they should pay.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, I have a claim to per diem since my first year. So, um, I was just under the understanding anything but a township would be paid by the county, but this brings, this brings to light something here. It's just like, yesterday I went to the airport for it. Brenda, Brenda and I both were there and.
Yeah.
Um,
And, and I put it.
Airport doesn't pay a per diem. Oh, the, the city pays per diem for your members? No?
Not for the airport.
Okay.
EMS were paid as representative of the city on the EMS board through EMS airport. The city does not reimburse.
Yeah.
The fire board, the representative from the city is reimbursed from the fire board.
Oh. Okay.
In, in the.
Well, go ahead, Brendan.
Commissioner Simmons?
Excuse me, Commissioner Scott, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
But, uh, in the past, when I was commissioner before, like claims, um, not parks and rec, um, but different other meetings I had been on, other, um, boards that have been on, the, the county's already paid, always paid the per diem for that. Um, so, except for, you know, except for, um, the, um, health board and those that are authorities under themselves.
Michigan Works pays, um, they pay mileage, pardon me?
The Committee on Aging pays their own.
Commission on Aging?
Yeah, because they're a separate entity, but, uh, like transit is now not a separate entity really. And although they receive a mileage, but, um, I can't right now. I'm drawing a blank on one of the committees I'm on right now, just like Personnel Committee. Going it, just like, uh, Insurance Committee. They always received the per diem from, from the county because they're not separate entities there.
So what's your opinion, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Simmons?
I think if they're a separate entity and they're paid for by like, say, the Board of Health or EMS or that, or nine-one-one or, uh, Commission on Aging, then they don't get it from us, but other standing committees that we're assigned to, uh, I would say yes, the county should pay.
Commissioner Mahew? What?
I don't think, somebody's got to pay.
Well, that's our question. Do the, the entities pay or does a county pay?
Just telling you the ones I'm on that do pay.
Commissioner Wiltie?
I agree with, uh, what Commissioner Simmons said.
Commissioner Wiltie, or Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, uh, what, sad question for Tim. Was, was there a fund balance sitting in the planning commissions? Uh, reflects maybe four hundred and eighty dollars a, a year that, that wasn't spent for a commissioner?
That, that would have been dumped back into the.
Into the general.
And would have used, so no.
I, 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 all the time I sat on the planning commission, it just never signed the paper because it was the unwritten rule that, uh, the commissioner be paid, paid for by the county. Or through, through our, our, our own voucher system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, uh, I don't, I mean, it's just, do we take money out of the coffer to give to the planning commission to give to the commissioner? Or do we just take the same amount of money out of the coffers and give it to the commissioner through a voucher system?
The coffer is all general fund when it.
Right.
To the board and the planning commission.
Right.
Right. Um, but you did, with the budget that you approved this year, had a line in the planning commission budget for per diem. But like I said, general fund, it's all.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think I'll go along with the other two so far is, is that if it's a separate entity, I don't know.
So what other separate entity?
Yeah.
Now we need.
Separate entity outside, outside a com, outside component of the county, then that they pay, they pay, if they pay one member, they pay all, they pay our member. We're not going to demand that, like the airport, we're not going to demand that the airport pay, pay a per diem, si- since it doesn't now. But if it does pay a, a member of, it should pay our commissioner too. Brenda's got some.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yeah, like Parks and Recreation, that's kind of, um, a donation thing, and I don't know any of us that collect anything for that. We just offer our time free gratis for Parks and Rec. And from a few years back, we're lucky it still exists really. A lot of hard work by a lot of volunteers have made that very successful. So I think I, I just volunteer for that, for that particular committee. Because of it's, it's strictly donation. It's not separate from county.
But, you know, I think that's up to you. Like I say, I, I, I haven't collected a per diem since the first year. I took, I don't know, a couple of times took a per diem. And that was at, um, I think there has been commissioners in the past that have submitted vouchers for Parks and Rec. I don't know exactly, but I, I would, I, I think so. Um, I don't think that that should be exempt uh, from a per diem if, if, if a commissioner chooses. Right now it's you and I and we're not going to choose to do it, but I don't, I don't think we should write the rule right now that it doesn't. Uh, but yeah, if it's a non-component of the county, um, whether it's Michigan Works, like you said, or, or, or EMS or nine-one-one, they have their own budgets, their own source of money and everything else. If they pay per diems to their other members, they should pay our commissioners also.
And we do.
They pay mileage.
Yeah, whatever they pay another member, they should, our, our commissioner should be entitled to the same, the same, I would say.
This sparked a lot of conversation. I believe this was my first per diem I had ever turned in. And this sparked a lot of conversation.
Yeah.
I had to turn mine in yet.
When I first.
Oh, I, I don't agree. Talk about it, right? Costs, costs is, things aren't cheap anymore. So you know what?
Right. And when I, when I first started and Brenda was here when I first started, uh, it was, it was a smaller, it was a smaller, uh, salary. It was only four thousand dollars a year for a commissioner, but you got healthcare.
Yeah.
And you got a per diem for every meeting you came to.
Commissioner meeting as well, correct?
Commissioner meeting, yeah. And when we dropped the, when we dropped the healthcare, we raised the salary up and we dropped per diems for our meetings.
I never.
Same point.
I never had a per diem for a commissioner meeting. That was part of the salary.
Uh, I used to get a per diem for it.
For this meeting?
Yeah.
What, what, hold on guys, we're getting, we're getting off track. So what's, what's, sir, I guess the majority opinion, I, I think now we're gonna need a list of exactly, eh, before we can make a decision, I think we all need to see the list of exactly what entities we're talking about.
Yeah, it's really that liaison list. Um, we got it approved in January. And we've actually, uh, been doing some calls today to ask these, uh, committees, what, what do they pay per, per diem? Uh, so we'll have that list ready to go too. Uh, I've got a few of them that haven't, uh, gotten back to us yet, but.
So can we be, I, I guess I would like more information before I, I feel comfortable voting on this.
We have the, uh, right on your appointed board and commissioner roster is right on your iPad.
Correct, but he also hasn't heard back from what, what they're paying others and what they're willing to do and not do. And I mean, I think before we make a decision, we all need to look at that list and agree on it. I think it deserves more, more conversation so we know exactly.
That's fine.
On that, what we're voting on and what we're getting paid for.
Want a motion table then? I, I, let's say I made the, did I make the motion?
Uh, I don't, I know Tim just started, he said just discussion, majority vote on a motion to establish. I don't think a motion was made at all.
No, and you can refer that to the next Cal meeting and we can just.
I would like, I would like it. I'm not in a hurry to get a payment on that. I would like further explanation. Are you guys good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Item seven, uh, seventy claims, uh, total is one hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and forty-four cents. Commissioner Mahew and I, uh, looked at claims. Uh, the big one on there that we seen was for the EDC was thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, wasn't really anything else. Physicals, we are gonna have to, uh, talk about those next year when that contract is up because I see, uh, different, different, uh, um, I'm lost for words right now. Different entities are going with different, uh, institutions for, for physicals for numerous reasons. So we're definitely gonna have to.
There shouldn't only be one. You need to go another, and that's transit. They need that DOT physical.
Different, uh, departments, the, I called, uh, the under sheriff yesterday because, uh, an officer had to go to Covenant, um, at help for an M Coles actual physical because that's a different type of physical and Mid-Michigan doesn't do them anymore. I'm used to. Uh, apparently it's a very rare, it's a new hiree, um, just out of the academy. And, and I looked at the physical, I mean, it's, it's vision, it's eye, it's, it's very extensive. It's, uh, mental health. Um, they, they had that employee go down there, uh, the transit had want to go to McLaren. And I think there were way, been a Mid-Michigan in there as well. Just I seen numerous difference for physicals. And I know we have a contract with Mid-Michigan. So before we agree to any contract next year, we're gonna have to figure out exactly what we want and who we want.
And we may need multiple.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um.
When does that come up? Contract.
Like fog?
Look it up, probably, yeah.
It was, it was only in annual contracts.
Three more months then.
Probably get close, yeah.
Well then, let's, let's put that on the next committee's hall so we can start talking about the parameters needed. Let's get the information from the sheriff's department, what they, they need in, in the Sam Coles thing. And then transit, because I can tell you when I got my CDL. Well, um, medical card again renewed and, uh, I went to, I was at McLaren getting my, uh, physical and they had, I had to get a different doctor.
We have to be DOT certified.
Right, right.
Yep. Uh, there was some training on there. What else did we see on there? Um, what's the we call on yesterday? Every question we had was answered.
Yep.
Um, I think that's really it. I didn't see any other big bills. There were some repairs for some vehicles. There's a striping of, uh.
What'd you say, the forty-five thousand dollars?
Thirty-five thousand for the EDC. Our legal team had some costs in there too.
That's just the one-time EDC one.
Yep, thirty-five thousand dollars for the EDC. Yep. That's what we give them each year. That's what we budgeted. I think the last two years. I think we just talked about that. Um, any questions on bills, claims?
No, I don't.
I don't have any question.
We entertain a motion to, I will, to pay the bills of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and forty-four cents.
That's like.
We have a motion with support. Any further discussion?
Yeah, um, was it their resolution or something that we give them thirty-five thousand dollars every year?
We budgeted, it's in our budget.
For next FY two?
Well, there's just this one and we'll discuss that at our next one.
Thank you. Okay, I got it. It's already in the budget and you already found it, right? Okay, I got it.
Yep.
I'm thinking about next FY, okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call votes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie. Brenda Simmons.
Yeah.
Rick Scott.
Yes.
Item eight, any unfinished business? Item nine Administrator slash Controllers Report.
You have the written report, um, with your materials, but just a few other items. Uh, we did have our budget training, um, with the department heads last Monday. I'm very happy to report as I looked around the room, every department was represented by at least one person. We had a couple of commissioners attend. And the feedback I've gotten, though I haven't, uh, solicited from everybody, but the feedback's been very positive. Uh, and I think it's, uh, was very good. I think, uh, Speaker, uh, Taylor hit the topic right, right the bullseye. So I was pretty happy with that. On the bad news side of things, you may remember a case called the Fox case, and that's the one that's been lingering for several years now over, uh, uh, surplus, uh, funds from property sales, uh, at tax sales. Uh, the Sixth Circuit, um, denied their class action and so we were out of it for about a month. And now that case is gonna take on a new name called McKenzie, uh, same issue. And the reason for this is, uh, Fox didn't have standing in Ogumah County and all the other counties in the Eastern District, uh, for the, uh, uh, US Circuit Court. Uh, and so Fox continues, but only in Gratchit County. And now these attorneys are going to end up filing cases probably in every other county. Uh, so instead of getting their class action, they'll have to deal with, uh, all the counties individually. I'm not familiar enough with the legal system to know if they can consolidate those or not. I think that's what they tried to do with Fox. Uh, but the bad news being that, that it's back on. So, um, that's something that we'll probably hear more from in the future. Uh, we have, um, uh, meeting with our, uh, MERS representatives. Uh, they mentioned, uh, last meeting, um, I think we were scheduling that for this month, but MERS called, they could not meet that date. So that's gonna be rescheduled to July twenty-fourth. There'll be two meetings. Um, on that date, it's a Monday. One will be at ten-thirty, one will be at one o'clock, and employees will be invited to meet with the representative one-on-one if they have individual questions and he'll be here for the whole day. And then lastly, we've had a number of questions. This must be the time of year for it or something, but a number of personnel questions concerning the, uh, the way we pay our employees, whether they're on salary, whether they're hourly, who's exempt and who isn't. So on the July tenth Department Head Meeting, I'll go over that. Uh, there's, uh, several very, uh, uh, well-articulated guidelines that the Department of Labor has put out and we'll just review those. Um, question had come up, um, this past week about an employee who is paid salary but works greater than forty hours. Well, just because you make a salary doesn't mean you're exempt from the overtime provision. And in this case, that, that was in play. So we'll go over that and a number of other, uh, guidelines, just to kind of refresh everybody's memory. Um, this is, uh, one of the reasons why we did the Nova time. So a lot of this is automatically addressed as soon as an employee punches in and punches out. But we have a few nuances that, uh, we'll go over with departments. There's actually a test that, uh, Department of Labor has developed to determine if a person is exempt or not. We'll go over those criteria. And don't think we're gonna see a lot of change come out, uh, from our end, but at least everybody will be well-informed about how those rules work. And unfortunately, we'll go over some of the, uh, consequences if we don't do it correctly. Uh, there was recently, um, major event down in, I think it was Bay City Western, uh, in their school system, a number of, uh, teachers who were coaching after school were asked to sign termination notices because the school was not in compliance with, uh, what the Fair Labor Standards Act says on how, how they're paid. Um, and there's debate as to whether that was the right approach, but that's the approach they took. And this is exactly why. So it's just a good thing that we're all refreshed on, uh, from time to time and just to make sure that we're all operating within the guardrails. So that's it.
Any questions? Item ten, elected officials and department head reports. Clerk?
No.
Nothing?
No.
Open? Sheriff's Office?
Report, please.
Perfect. Any, any department heads on the phone? I see Mr. Nichols.
Maybe.
Nothing for me.
Nothing for you?
Nope. Thank you.
Any other elected officials or department heads on the phone? Uh, Manners from the floor. Commissioners may take this opportunity to introduce manners not otherwise discussed on the agenda. Item twelve, motions for adoptions. Commissioners may offer other motions not otherwise taken up as part of the agenda. Are there any motions for adoption?
Me.
Commissioner Mahew?
I would like to make the motion. It requires the county administrator controller to be performing all these duties of the controller immediately. Of the controller immediately, if these duties are not, well, within two weeks. If not. Then go back to being the administrator. If we're gonna pay, we'd like to have it.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there any support?
No support because I want.
Again, there's, there's, we got a motion with support, is there any further discussion? Discussion, go ahead, Commissioner Simmons.
Uh. I would hope that Mr. Mayhew would just kind of, uh, hold back on that, because we've already asked, um, our controller. For our specifics, you did, I think at the committee as a whole meeting last time. About a list of, uh, his responsibilities. And, uh, that we were to go over them. Um. And we have not received those yet.
Any further discussion?
I'd like the motion read again, so I can type it, please.
Can you read that motion again?
I would like to make the motion, require the county administrator slash controller to be.
Can, can you slow down?
Does he ever written?
Do you have it written? He does.
Well. Yeah, but it says immediately, but two weeks is quick enough.
Is, uh, the first one?
First one, yeah.
So. Two week, within two weeks is believing it as that, okay.
Any further discussion? Um. Commissioner Wiltie?
So, Commissioner Mayhew, can you give a more clarification of what you were expecting to see in two weeks?
What we're paying for.
Which I think is what, I'm sorry, do you want, did you?
Go ahead.
Which I think I, I agree with Commissioner, uh, Simmons on that, I, I think this is on the next committee of the whole meeting, I, I don't disagree with the timeframe. But I think we, we all need to have a better understanding of what our expectations, um, and what the job duties and role is. Um. And then I think the timeline can be. Could be possibly implemented or discussed.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
And, um, although the, uh. Controller Administrator will be talking to us about that at the next committee's hall. Uh, we also all need to do our own research. To learn as much as we can about controllers, administrators. So we also can be. Uh, heads up about. Um, the, the, um, responsibilities versus just trying to. Pull them off the top of our head.
Yeah, and we'll be getting an email as well from the legal team.
Thanks. Yeah, I was understanding we were gonna have a good conversation at our next C O W, is important to have.
Commissioner Scott?
What's? How does this operate within the contract that we have, though?
I think that's.
Can you legally do this?
I, I think that's a question to ask.
Yeah, what, 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 what are you gonna call this, I mean. You get to the two-week point, and for some reason, because we don't have any specific. Uh, description, so then we're gonna use somebody's opinion whether or not he has accomplished this point. And then if, if, if that hasn't happened, then a motion is made. And then supported because in order to talk about it. Um. I, I don't know, you know, I mean. This is kind of, we've already signed an agreement. And now you wanna midstream. Change the agreement.
I'm, I'm gonna disagree with you, I don't think it's midstream, I, I think that this is just, I see it down, I'll get to you in just a second. Um, I think that. I think we all need a better understanding as far as the rules, responsibilities, the timeline. Um, this, this contract was recently signed, we're definitely not midstream.
Well, I'm in the stream, I'll say.
We're not, we've started, we've started, so, Dan, did you wanna go ahead? I think you're muted. At you. Done, yeah, there you go. We can't hear you.
There you go, you can hear me now, right?
Yes.
Noted.
Um, and I apologize, I, I know it's been read, or tried to be read several times, but I'm not sure I've really heard the most motion from beginning to end.
I need clarification on it as well, because it doesn't read correctly to me.
Okay.
Go ahead. Wanna read it again, Commissioner Mayhew?
I would like to make the motion. Require the county administrator slash controller to perform all these duties. Of the controller. Immediately, if these duties are not being performed by the controller within two weeks. The position of the controller should move to the administrator.
Dan, I don't think you were at our, our meeting at the committee of the hall, I don't think there was a representative there. Just to catch you up, and I plan on touching base with you tomorrow, um. There was discussion at that committee of the hall as far as, uh, the roles of, of this new role. The responsibilities.
Okay.
Um, some shift, you know, figuring out exactly what roles, what responsibilities, what, what's new. Um, is in place with this new role. And what timeframe, our, our expectations.
Okay, well, I guess I'll look forward then to hearing from you.
Yeah, I will give you a call tomorrow.
Okay, I will be here, uh, in the afternoon, I'll be.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I table that motion? I didn't make it, I can table it, right?
Table.
My person would like to move to table that motion until we, at the next committee of the hall, after the next committee of the hall.
I'll support that.
The motion, uh, I made the motion with support from Commissioner Scott to table that motion. Any further discussion on table limit? Roll call vote. Uh, Craig Scott.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Commissioner, any other motions for adoption?
Uh, the other motion I'd like is, uh. That. The controller doesn't have any more, uh. Right, uh, approve any bigger. Purchase than like the sheriff. Fourteen, fifteen hundred bucks. The sheriff has his own.
What's the current limit, is that? Is that what you're asking, I guess, I'm confused.
No, I was too, he told me five, ten, fifteen thousand.
So what's the question? What's the motion, I'm sorry?
I'm not, I would. Sheriff can spend what, fourteen, fifteen hundred bucks without asking? I believe.
The purchasing policy is in place, and we follow the purchasing policy.
Right.
To the limits, or allowed by department ads, next level is the county administrator.
Right.
County administrators' purchasing levels are exactly the same as every other department. By policy, there's no difference. Right now, the limits are fifteen hundred dollars for just the outright approval. Fifteen thousand and forty-nine ninety-nine would require at least three quotes and verification that there are funds in the budget in question. Anything over five thousand dollars is subject to, uh, reformer proposals. Formal proposals are requested unless this board waives any of those, uh, criteria, as she did tonight, but the waters off.
Get all that?
Yeah, I'm good with that, I'm just saying what he told me.
No, what? Question?
Commissioner Scott?
Looking at purchasing policy. Number four, D four, or whatever, county administrator shall acquire all goods. Where anticipated cost exceeds fifteen hundred but less than five thousand, suppliers upon such terms and conditions as. He or she. Shall deem advisable upon receipt of three written goals.
And that's gotta be brought to the board.
No, less than five thousand. Uh, when exceeds five thousand is final approved by the county board of commissioners.
But it exceeds five thousand.
Hmm, yeah, that's right.
It exceeds five thousand, it's gotta come to us.
Okay, so.
Commissioner David, kind of question, are you?
Well, where's the shirt, uh, I'll look. Go ahead, go ahead.
Did you wanna respond to that, Commissioner Mayhew?
No, that's fine, as long as that's what it is, I'm just saying when we asked about the. Cameras and the deal and the stairwells. Tim told me five, ten, fifteen thousand was no problem. That's what.
I know, well, wait a minute, it's.
Hold on, hold on, Commissioner Scott, then.
All right.
So it, it, but it wasn't approved, it was.
No, 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 it was not approved, we had a meeting in here, and.
Yep.
The judge wanted the cameras.
Yep. But it wasn't actually approved, it had to be brought to us.
No, it was not.
Okay. Commissioner Wiltie, go ahead.
I just, I wanted a little more me trying to figure out where, you know, a little more substance on this. Um. Is this a meeting that we were in that Tim said?
Security and, and this, I mean, by the way, you talked.
Yes, the judge was here, the gal bailed off the thing.
The stairwell?
Is that a security meeting or a commissioner's?
Security.
Can I spend talking about equipment? I think you're just looking to make sure that the same policies are in place for the controller, correct, is that what you just want? Yeah.
We gotta balance the budget, we gotta know who can spend what.
Right, that's, that's fair.
Is, that's fair. Roger, can I copy that again, please?
Is, is the question, is, was the question, do we have?
Funds.
Ten, fifteen thousand dollars in the budget? Do we have funds available, or is the question, can you just go out and buy it for fifteen thousand?
Can you just go out and buy?
I think that's what the question was, is if the, with the, hang on, with the new role of the commissioners, or, excuse me, of the controller slash administrator. You just want a verification that those same policies are in place.
Exactly.
Correct, am I understanding?
No, but you're saying that he told you that he can spend fifteen thousand dollars?
Yes.
I think what he's trying to say to you is that there's fifteen thousand dollars available in, in the budget for a purchase like that. That doesn't mean that somebody can just go and buy it for that.
Yeah, maybe I misunderstood, but what I'm telling you is what I heard.
Okay, well.
And I just wanted to make sure, if we gotta balance the budget, we can't have somebody spending ten, fifteen thousand bucks when they want to.
Well.
Sure, they, they can't, we have policy in place.
Right, we have a policy in place, but. When we say we gotta save money. This is money that's not already budgeted. If it's already budgeted, then we're planning on spending it. Well. That's what a budget is. The plan to spend money.
From that specific line item.
And there's contingent money there, there's, there's different funds. So. Uh, you gotta go back to when you say, can we spend fifteen thousand dollars? Yes, if it's budgeted, yes, we can spend it. If it's not budgeted. I'm with you, I don't, if it's not budgeted, I don't wanna spend it. But I think we oughta get down what the question is. And what it pertains to. And what his answer is, are you asking him, do we have fifteen thousand to spend, or are you asking him, can he write a check for fifteen thousand dollars?
He said his limit is the same as any other head of the department.
Right.
Your question, your question was answered, correct?
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank you. Now, was there a resolution? Doesn't sound like the reso, was a resolution made? Or was this discussion, I guess I got lost somewhere, it's too.
No, it was just.
He.
Okay.
Well, you started with the motion.
Hold on, Commissioner Scott. Where are we at with this, Tim?
I've lost track, I do recall the word.
You wanna rescind your resolutions? Cuz I think you did make the resolution.
Made a motion.
Motion, okay, so, do you wanna?
We can rescind it.
That's what we just said.
We're not gonna change anything, it's gonna be the same.
So do you wanna rescind your?
That's fine.
Is that a yes?
Yeah.
Okay, there, we're good, Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Simmons.
Okay, well, we had an airport meeting. Once you do twenty-first. We talked about the flying at the airport, it's probably the most successful flying that they've had, ever had. Uh, they served over three hundred people for breakfast, and they could have served a lot more, but they ran out of vittle, so there was nothing else to eat. So, and I think the big draw there was the two fighter jets, the helicopters, and I mean, there were several, several aircraft, all types.
Oh, nice.
For them to look at. Um, also, if you'd like to see some of the items that took place, uh, with the fly-in, you can go to the airport Facebook page, and there's a lot of photos. Um. On that Facebook page about the flying, it's really interesting, I saw a lot of photos today, and it's. It's something to see, um, those, those jets flying side by side over the airport, it's pretty cool. And the kids really liked it, you could hear them ooh and an ah in the back about those jets, so they loved them. Uh, we took a tour of the airport today, and, um, we looked at an outdated navigation system that will probably be torn down because the pole on that. Particular system has to have a light on it. So to, to paying a light bill on that particular light bulb. Uh, we'd rather have it torn down than pay the electric bill. Um. And it's. Serving no purpose cuz it's non-operational anyway, so might as well tear it down. Uh, we have a weather station there, in two thousand sixteen, it was, um. Put there for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And it cost about three thousand dollars a year to operate it, but the big planes coming in now, we charge ramp fees for those large, large aircraft that come in. We receive about twelve thousand dollars a year for that, so. Those ramp fees are more than covering the operational fees for that weather station. I think the, the runway has to be redone, and I cannot remember the exact figures. But the state pays five percent of the. Cost, the airport pays five percent, and the federal government pays ninety percent, so. And I think we're looking into that for next year sometime, but the engineering has to be done first. And we have approximately, my understanding is, um. Sixty-five acres planted into crops. If I understand, we have about sixty, seventy other acres that can be converted into farmland. Um, and the farmer has prepared the pro, the property and everything, and put the appropriate, um. Fertilizing stuff in there to grow crops, and a lot of tree stumps have been removed from there, and. Um, corn seems to be the crop of choice for that farmland. Today, we had a transit meeting, and we took a tour of the transit property. And right now, it, the new transit building will be built to the east of the current transit building. And a lot of trees had to be removed to make that, uh, to make that happen. And there is a grant for that, it's not gonna cover everything, but, um. Oh, I was gonna give that to you, wasn't I?
That's fine, you can keep going, or I.
But I don't. Um. This year, um. Three employees are gonna be going to Roscon to receive, uh, sort of a key to receive the P on their. On their, um, driver's license so they can transport passengers. And there'll be one driver retiring this August. And there's already a part-time driver that'd like to go to full-time, so we have someone that already take that guy's place. We are currently twelve transit routes, now, when I say twelve transit routes. Uh, they have one going to, let's say, Head Start in the morning. And another one going in the afternoon, and that, the morning and the afternoon is considered one route, that's not two separate routes, so. Just to be up, so they have twelve routes right now. Um. We've only received one bid to build the new building, that's from Miller Construction, and that's still up there, and we have any updates on that, Tim?
I did speak with the attorney this afternoon about the format of the contract, and expect we're gonna have that relatively soon. Uh, he had some questions about the plans that'll have to be submitted, but we did include in our. Uh, R F P that, uh, the vendor in this case will be responsible for pulling all permits, and if there's specifications that they need. Uh, for plans, I would expect that they would fill those. But that's it, we're just, uh, now in the final stages of drafting that contract, we got the publication. Data that they needed down in Lansing to show that we did circulate, uh, our proposal. Uh, so it's now just a matter of taking, uh, our requirements and the state requirements, and putting them in between two covers, and having people sign off.
You have any idea how long I could take, I hope it's not long, I hope it's.
I, I don't, I, I got the. I, I don't, I, I got the impression it won't be long, um, but I. I couldn't predict that.
Just one, because we've been waiting a long time for this, really. And, uh, we do have a hundred and eighty thousand grand, um, for this building, and fifty-five thousand dollars of that was designated for security and camera fencing, and. The, um, we'd like to transfer that. For those two items to be put on the building to reduce the. Uh, check that we have to pay out. Because when you have a grant like this, you have to pay. What do they call those wages? Per.
Prevaling wages.
Prevaling wages, yeah. And so if we don't have a grant, if we put this in the grant, then the prevailing wages would be just for the building and not for these other two items. Because there won't be a grant for that, those two items. These'll be a lot of repairs there, doors, soft fascia, roof needs to be repaired. And we recorded it, reform, we record phone calls needs to be repaired. Or replaced. A couple of things I have here is that we, I, he had a health department meeting on Monday, the twenty-sixth, in Hale. Uh, there is an MT meeting, MTE meeting, uh. On Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, at six P M, Edwardstown Ship Hall, which is on Brooks Road. And we have an ARPA meeting Friday, the twenty-ninth, is my understanding. And discuss future topics, am I correct in understanding that?
It might be the.
Yeah, next Thursday.
Thursday, twenty-ninth.
Oh, Friday?
Yeah, it's Thursday.
I did say Friday.
Five thirty.
Sorry, yeah, five thirty.
Did we make that five?
We'll make a five.
I don't care.
We'll make a five.
Everybody got down? Commissioners.
It was gonna be five thirty.
It doesn't matter, I don't. Well, we've been worth discussing it.
I thought.
That's what I asked, was it, do we decide on five or five thirty?
I thought they were gonna stay normal, five thirty.
Okay, five thirty. Commissioner Mayhew?
I'm not done yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Simmons.
Oh, yeah. Have we, this is, um, focused at our administrator, controller. Um, have you made any contact with consumers yet about the survey of installation and the cost savings to use LED lights in this building?
I have, I contacted Rich.
Castle?
Castle. Uh, handed me off to a different division at Consumers that I'm waiting to hear from, I can't remember the man's name. Uh, but, uh, they have a team, if this is what they do, so, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to know what that was, another thing is, um. Yeah, we submitted, because I brought it to the attention before about our bathrooms are not really OSHA, um. So, yeah, we sent out any requests for bids to update the two bathrooms in the handicap that's acceptable, and the reason I say that is. Although, if nothing's been approved yet, can bids be sent out beforehand, so you have them, so you have to look at it or no?
We could, but the hazard in doing that is, and we ask people to put together a pretty detailed proposal for us. And if it's a project that we, we end up not doing. When we do end up having to send out a next one, we're gonna probably get a little more reluctance, you know, to take the time to fill out all the material. So I, I suggest not to, you can, but I would suggest that wouldn't be a very good practice.
So, we probably discussed something like that at the ARPA meeting, right?
Right.
Okay, that's all I wanted to go.
Commissioner Mayhew?
I went to Rose City, the chief of police resigned. They are getting a splash pad. Putting some fake ads going.
When does that start, that splash pattern, hasn't?
They, they got a hundred thousand dollar grant, and it's forty thousand, plus that, they get it. And, uh, they haven't got it, but they're. They're going ahead with that. I went to West Branch, Peach Lake is still a pretty hot subject. They haven't done nothing yet, but you're talking about some studies on that. And then, that's pretty much it.
That's it?
Yep.
Commissioner, what's it?
All right, you guys ready? Be a long one. Uh, no, it won't be too long. Uh, transit, I mean, pretty much. Commissioner Simmons, after most of that, we had another committee, it's our second committee meeting today, we got some really good, strong committee members. Asked a lot of good questions, we're still all kind of educating ourselves on some things, but, uh. Ray even made a point, you know, the director there, that, uh, he feels it's gonna be very beneficial to him, and. So, uh, big things that we really need to keep moving forward on, and I'll continue to talk with Tim, and, um, Brian Stein's gonna help us with a lot of these maintenance issues. We really need to, to. To get a good, uh, foothold where we're at with that, and get those moving forward, um, on some of the maintenance issues there, but, uh. Transit's fully staffed, run good Saturday, service is running good, averaging about forty, forty to sixty calls on Saturdays, three buses. Um, everything's, everything's going pretty good there. Uh, Rogue Mission. Commissioner Scott, we're there this past Wednesday, uh, they're busy time of year, um, you know, they got a lot of projects going on, a lot of re-graveling projects starting up. A lot of their. Their road, their, their, their issues that they had over the winter, that they're, they're fixing their punch list, um, everything's running good there. We're, we're staffed, um, they're trying to fill, fill a few spots. But everything there at the Rogue Commission's going well. Um, big, big issue there, you guys heard me bring up a couple months ago. Is these mineral rights, we've got forty acres that eventually we're okay right now that we, we own. That we want to be able to get aggregated out of, and right now the state is saying that for each. Ton we take out of there, we gotta pay a dollar or something. Each yard we take out, we gotta pay a dollar or something, it's just really. It really makes no sense, so we're working hard on that, I know the legislators, um, trying to work on that as well, so. Uh, that's something that I've been helping them out a little bit with, um, between our state rep and our state senator, um, to see where they can go with trying to get. That to come to an end. Um, EDC, uh, we had a board meeting this past week, uh, just working hard on exposure, um, trying to get out to more people in the, in the county, what, what we offer. Uh, we're starting a fundraising board, try to, to find more fundraising, um, for the EDC. Uh, EMS, we got a lot of things going on there, and Paul's the chairman of the EMS board. Um, we just put out to the public, because we feel it's very important that the job goes to the public, the application for the director. Our director's gonna be retiring in, in August. So that is, that is out, and the application's at the end by, I believe, July seventh, so we've got some big decisions to make there, we had a really important meeting last week with the MERS representative. Uh, MERS, it's, it's causing the EMS. Um, a lot, a lot of money, so we're looking into some different options, uh, for new employees as we move forward, so that's gonna be some big decisions to make. Uh, emergency extension, I'm serving on their interview panel right now for our new four H leader for the county, that's been an interesting process. Uh, it makes you do a lot of great things in the county, um, as they always do. Uh, a cert, which is our community emergency resort team, we have our big, uh. Emergency preparedness expo this Saturday at McLaren, in the parking lot from twelve to four. You guys know anybody that would maybe wanna? Be a cert member, you know, again, hopefully something, but we hardly ever, ever have to go to work, but if we would, you know, we, um. Case of an emergency, a, a real big emergency, it's nice to have people that wanna help and support police and the fighter and EMS, so looking for more certain members. That's at McLaren this Saturday from twelve to four in the parking lot. Uh, by township, it's, uh, a lot of the same things, you know, blights is a big, big issue there in Mills Township, um, and a lot of the, uh. A lot of the residents wanna see stronger, more enforcement with the blight, it's, uh, becoming, uh, more of a heated topic all the time, so, uh. We're, we're hoping to give our blight officer a little more assistance, so he can make some stronger decisions and continue to clean up Mills Township. Uh, they approved the construction of, uh, enhancing the park on Skidley Lake, local contractor, um. Catterman out of Hale, um, got that job, so that's good, uh, that'll start up, uh, probably here late summer. And, uh. So I have.
Commissioner, I had a question, the EMS position that's, that's being posted is going from full-time to part-time, I, I think I looked at the posting as a part-time position, am I incorrect?
Um, no, that would, so we had just filled our administrative assistant, Gail, she was full-time. So we had just, our last application that we had was for a part-time administrative assistant, that's been filled. Now this is, uh, for the full-time director. Um, yeah.
Commissioner Scott?
Um. Well. Charlie lived pretty good for the, uh, Rogue Mission, um. So I did attend the budget training. Uh, that Mr. Taylor came here to our county and talked about budget. But I felt that was very, very informative, and I was glad to see the receptive. Uh, the reception I was getting from the department heads and the representatives that were there. I was, I was very surprised at how many people we had there, and I think that was. Very useful, like to see more of that in the future. Uh, the airport, well, uh, Brenda's covered that pretty well, uh, that runway rehab. Uh, will be next year, uh, that's about a, just over three million dollar project. I think the number she was trying to come up with was the hundred and ninety thousand dollars in engineering. Costs.
Yeah.
Of course, that is covered ninety-five percent by the federal government, so. Uh, this whole, this whole project, but we've been saving up money for the last couple of years, knowing that this was coming. Our, our runway is in good shape, but it just, we need to take care of it before it gets bad shape. It, it, it's more than just a road out there a mile long, uh, loose stones on a, on a runway is a, a big enemy. For a, a prop plane. So, uh, it, it needs to be a very, uh, uh, well-built road. So, uh. We, uh, we also got a quote on directors and officers' insurance plan. Uh, this is something we needed to be covered on. And, uh, we went ahead with, uh. Getting that, uh, coverage. So there's, there's some other major projects down. Coming down the pipe there, and, uh, we're handling it pretty well. Ogumon Township was last night, uh. Of course, uh, we asked you to pass the Sparks Grant, uh, letter of approval, or a letter of support, I should say. They also had their budget hearing. There, uh, last night, uh, of course Township budget start July one. Uh, they, uh, they're being asked, uh, I don't know, the city, I guess, is asking, uh, for a. Because we're involved in a four twenty-five, uh, agreement on some property out on M thirty, they're. They're asking for a tax abatement. There. Um, so there's gonna be some more talks with the city. I know that, before they make a final vote. And then, uh, water and sewer rates went up. In our township, it's the first time since nineteen eighty-one, so they're, they're just going up now.
How much?
Twenty-five cents a, uh, thousand. And I think the city and the West Branch Township is doing the same thing. Um, so. Uh, yeah, that's, that's, well, that's where I've been, these other, everybody else covered their, my stuff.
You guys had a Park and Recs meeting, right? Is, did you guys report on it?
Yeah.
Was the High Banks brought up, or is that an upcoming meeting?
What's that, please?
The High Banks property, was that brought up at the Parks and Rec meeting?
It's upcoming.
Is it upcoming? I don't, I was just asking, I don't recall. And it was discussed at the last meeting.
My understanding was the last.
It was last week, you know, it was my.
Then. Was it brought up, the conversation?
I thought we talked about a little bit.
Yeah.
Commissioner.
That was last week?
You better should.
Ask me something?
Yes, please.
Okay, my understanding was that, um. Commissioner Wiltsy wanted to come to the Parks and Rec meeting to discuss that with Parks and Rec Board. About the High Banks. And, uh, the only problem is that we cannot have three commissioners at that Parks and Rec meeting, because then we have a, uh, quorum. So, um. That's the issue right now.
Oh, I.
I've said you can come, bro, and I'm operational, but.
But I don't know, I think that cat maybe got twisted around a little bit, I, I. I said that, you know, I mean, I've, I've said my piece with it, I think Parks and Rec would like to take it on, I said that would be great, it'd be fabulous. But, uh. I mean, if not, I think our second best would be. You know, going the route that, you know, we have our own committee, and we have, you know, some strong people involved that will help. Help roll with that for us.
I just thought it was gonna be brought up for discussion if, if Parks and Rec.
Well, I, no, I thought it was too, that's why.
But I did think you were gonna attend, so I, I just wonder where we're at with it, we don't want to drop the ball again, so.
I have no, no problem attending, I want, I would like to attend, but I'd like to keep this moving forward so we can get some.
Well, you can come to the next meeting, as long as he's not in, just, Jim, as long as he's not in, uh, uh, this.
There's, there's no voting, there's no voting, is there?
Just let us know, and we'll make sure it's posted properly, it's already a posted meeting, but we'll, we'll do the belt and suspenders, we'll see if warm up the board.
That's worried while making the front page. Okay.
I'm not worried about the front page, dude.
Um, I attended, is, is, I attended, I did not attend the night on meeting, there was a glitch in the email system, um, I have to touch base with Tom tomorrow, Jessie said she has touched base with him, but I did have conversation with her. Um, it sounds like that meeting was quite short, um, they did have an individual that retired. Very minimal overtime, they got some, Jessie got some updated furniture. Again, no real issues, um, with, um, Michigan Works had their annual picnic last Friday at the Gladwin County Park. Um, Gladwin City Park, excuse me, that's a very, very nice park, uh, it's a very nice, uh, picnic that they put on, they fed everybody. They had, the state rep was there, there were some other representatives that were there, um, they gave some awards out for longevity. Um, it was a very nice gathering, their official meeting is next week, Logan Township had a special meeting last night, uh, my mother attended for me. Uh, she, uh, there was, sounds like there was, uh, a lot of discussion, some battling. Um, sounded like only three, uh, three, and then a fourth board member did walk in. Um, they thought it was moved to next week, but it, it wasn't properly posted and, and. Sounds like it's ongoing, so there'll be more to come with that, um, but it does sound like they are moving in the right direction now, so. Um, we have a zoning meeting next week. That should be a pretty interesting meeting, I see some businesses. Are on our agenda, um, and then a Michigan Works meeting next week as well, so. That's it for me, anything else, Commissioner, yes?
Yeah, uh, Kelly, you were at planning.
Planning.
You, you, uh, parks, you came to the parks, you remember? We. About Scottville talked about a little bit.
I don't remember.
Remember who talked about what?
High Banks.
The High Banks.
Scott, that was the one that's on the zoning that, that, just wanna bring it up, yeah.
He's on parks also.
Yeah, I know who said it.
Okay, I thought we talked about it a little bit or something, I think we were expecting.
We had two commissioners, one says yes, one says no.
Well, I think, I think it was discussed. Um, could have been, uh, as, uh, committee as a whole, meaning.
It was, and, and to discuss the time and the date, and who was gonna go, and yes.
Parks and Rec, I don't think we brought it up, that was, that was.
More to come, you guys are.
Missed by us, and I apologize for that.
I'm, I'm gonna be there, I didn't think I could be there, so.
More to come on that. General public comment, any general public comment in the room? Come on up, sir, you know the rules, or do you want me to read them?
No, I don't.
Oh, gosh.
And I'm Zolstein Foster Township. I just wanna say a couple thank yous to, first of all, to the Ogumon County Sheriff's Department. They, uh, did an unmanned patrol this weekend up in our township, which we've asked for. And it was very, very successful, in fact, I had a big chuckle out of it, the amount of people that were stopping, there was nobody in the car, it went very well. Uh, second person was Dean Coleman, who helped round up a bunch of cattle that came from Rose City. That was very interesting, be like Saturday night. And he got them in back in the field, and they got them taken care of.
I heard about that.
Yeah.
Nobody got hurt, all was well.
It was great.
Fantastic.
It was great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, general public comment? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone?
Well, it's not gonna give them.
Update on the meeting?
Date on the meeting.
Any public comment on the phone?
Deputy Chairman?
Motion, we have a motion with support to adjourn at six fifty-eight.
Parted.
Me.
Yep.
All in favor, so, yeah. Pose, motion carries. He's too slow. Probably still trying to figure out mute.